Take a seat if you want to move up closer. I think you can hear, but if you move up closer, you should be able to hear more.
Do they have to sign up, Colleen?
Well, I'm going to read up from the names that have already signed up. If you want to offer testimony, and then if we have time, we should, we'll ask people to come up and speak.
Is he very dismantic?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't understand. You need to sign up, is that what you're asking?
No, I have to sign up.
You don't have to sign up. I'll call you down and you can offer your testimony.
It's not testimony, it's question.
Well, we already had the question. This is only part for the testimony part. We already did the question and answer session of the evening. This is testimony.
You can make comments, like same thing.
Comments, comments, yeah. You can ask the question and put it on the record, ma'am, but we won't answer. You can ask the question so it goes on the record. We won't answer it tonight. We'll try and get you an answer, okay? Alrighty. It is 7:35. We're going to begin the public hearing portion of the meeting. And this is the portion of the evening where you offer testimony to the panel up here. You can ask a question, put it on record. We won't answer it, so it's not a back and forth. We'll try and get you an answer later on. Right now, we just want you to offer your opinions, comments, and, as I said, questions. Same ground rules apply. Please don't interrupt when people are speaking. Even if you think you're speaking silently, you're still interrupting someone and it's tough to hear. Please put your cell phones on vibrate. Couple of cell phones went off, I think mine did. Just so you don't interrupt someone who's offering long testimony. I'm going to limit the testimony to five minutes. That's what we do in regular public hearings. And then I will call out names on the list. Even if you didn't sign up, in the end, I'll ask you to come up and you can say what you want to say. Yes?
You mentioned that you would get back to people with an answer.
We would try to, yes.
How will you do that?
Comment response document. There'll be a comment response document available in public review.
No, you'd have to leave us our address.
Leave us your address and we can send you. You can leave here with me. Yeah, if you want a comment response document, you come up at the end of the hearing and you can leave your address, okay?
If it's at the end of your comments, will that be fine?
Yes.
Can you turn them in?
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to put your address at the bottom of the comments, that'll work. Okay, and I'm just going to go on the first name on the list. If you don't want to come up, you say no and I'll continue. First person is Brian or Linda Mierhead? Okay. Kathy McNulty? Okay, you're given five minutes. And as soon as you just begin speaking, you'll be on the clock. Go ahead.
I'm sure I won't take five minutes. I want to thank you for giving me a primer about what might happen in my state of New York, and it's really, really depressing. I've had some contact with Williams and so far, it's been duplicitous. Everything they've told us, we found out later, were half-truths. The pipeline was completely full. There's lots of examples, but I've lost all confidence that you're going to tell the full truth to people whose lives you're going to have an enormous impact on. You think you're headed for New York. You're going to run over all kinds of private properties and spoil them. And you're going to make people sick. And this is temporal right here, but you will be held responsible for making people sick. You think that you're going to get away with it if you can meet this regulation or that regulation? Or if you're going to keep one type of poison to the level now acceptable, now they think won't make you sick? But if you add all those poisons together and you study this over time and you take all of the examples of people who are already getting sick, it's going to be your fault. It's going to be your fault. It's not just you're doing your job. You're a person and I'm a person. And if I get sick and my kids get sick and my home gets wrecked, it's your fault, all of you.
Thank you. Albert Prudhoe?
Okay, so you're the Department of Environmental Protection, correct? So let's kind of analyze what the Department of Environmental Protection means. A department, a group of people formed to accomplish a certain task or for a certain reason. Environment, a place or area where a species depends on for survival. Protection, the act of saving something or someone or someplace from danger or harm. So, okay, now that we're all clear that you're the Department of Environmental Protection, well, you're failing the jobs presumably then. You are condemning the people of this area to unnecessary health risks, exposing them to toxic and poisonous situations. And you may think you're getting away with this with perpetuating these environmental atrocities, but let me tell you, the world's changing. And it's changing quickly. And you will be held responsible. And for abetting the gas and oil industries in their crimes against nature, you will be held accountable. This is my first time in this part of PA. And on my short drive here from New York, the devastation I witnessed was appalling. If you think you're going to do this in New York, you're sadly mistaken. You should be ashamed of yourselves, especially you as a woman. How do you even look at your children in the eyes knowing that you are accomplice in destroying their future? Pathetic, absolutely pathetic. And you're young enough to know better.
Thank you, sir. Vera Swobodzny?
I want to say that all the compressor stations, including this one, is going to emit tons of all kinds of pollutants. And I came here from Long Island, New York, 21 years ago with my three children and five cats. And I came here for clean air, clean water. So I would like to keep it that way. And right now, after four years of industrial development, that is no longer the case. I give tours every week, a citizens tour of the sites. And I show people from all over the world, and especially from New York, what is happening to us? How, when there's no zoning, you can do anything, anywhere. You can put small, I call them small refineries. A small refinery as a gas site, up to like 300 feet or more from a home and from livestock. And you can also put compressor stations. We have a new one right now near me in Liberty Township, 400 feet from homes. And that you can do this anywhere. You can industrialize a whole county. And that's what's happening to us. And not only our county, but 24 or 25 other counties in Pennsylvania. So that the state where agriculture and food and milk and meat and everything is produced, and that is going into the food chain. I know farmers who have bad water because of gas drilling and fracking near them. And their animals have sores, their water has turned gray. They have rashes on their own bodies. And this milk is going into the food chain. It hasn't been stopped yet. I've been calling the DEP. I mean, I do call them pretty often, maybe once a week, and try and let them know what's happening. So these families, they need to have their water tested. I just got a call today from a family in Springville. And their water has changed and they're getting diarrhea. They have stomach problems. And they have cows, they're also a dairy, 200 head of cows. They are concerned about the changes. They have two wells about a quarter of a mile from them. So I told them, call the DEP. I gave them the number. Call them as soon as possible. Tell them the changes. Anyone that has changes to their water, to your health after drilling and fracking, call the DEP and get the water tested. Because even the pre-drill test is not sufficient. Because things change. And this is post-fracking, post-drilling. Get another test. So now we have all these air emissions. Tons are allowed of all the VOCs, BTEXs, and the formaldehydes and everything else. And we will be breathing this. I go in front of compressor stations. It takes me within 15 minutes to start to feel irritation in my throat, in my nasal passages. And I start to react. My forehead and other people feel it too. So it depends on your sensitivity, of course. Everybody's different. It varies with each individual. So this is what we're being exposed to. My children, my grandchildren, all of us. Even though we have a small population, 45,000 in our county, it is still exposure for everyone. And I am asking and pleading with the DEP, please do not allow this compressor station. Do not allow the permitting of it. It is just another one out of at least 17 that are now being proposed and more. Couple of dozen. They want to have a compressor station every two to four miles. We have four proposed on a 21-mile gathering line in the northern part of our county. Please don't allow this one. This one's a large one. And then there'll be large pipelines going from it. And it will impact our area further and further. But this is one of many impacts. And it's just endless for four years. And there's been no abatement.
You have about a minute here.
Thank you. And I'm just pleading with the Williams people, relinquish your positions. Don't even work for this company. They, as many other companies, have loads of violations. They have all kinds of problems. There's leaks in pipelines. Show that you don't want this for your humanity. You don't want this for your neighbors. And this is not being a good neighbor by allowing this abomination in our county. Because that's what it is. And we will hope that at some point, you'll run out of money and you won't be able to do this kind of genocide and abomination to us as well as all the other states in this country and around the world. Thank you.
Christopher Appert? Christopher? Were you still there, Christopher? Okay. David Plink? Did you say David? Okay, maybe you did say. Dr. Reverend Ellen Sockelo?
Well, after the response or lack of response to my earlier questions, I think I'm going to have to rewrite this as I'm speaking. After the response or lack of response to my earlier question, I think I'm going to have to rewrite this as I'm speaking. I was going to talk about how I've traveled through this area for more than 25 years to go to work and what it meant to me, but obviously, that's leading us to you, six, and everybody who you represent. I'm concerned about this proposed compressor station because I'm wondering if it's your intention that this will connect with the proposed Constitution pipeline. And I've underscored that word, proposed, several times because I'm here to let you know, as a representative of New York State citizens, that we will not allow you to do this in our state. We are going to stop you. In the courts, at the border, in every way possible. And I want you to listen to that because that's the truth. Again, I understand this question was asked earlier. Why isn't Williams including this compressor station as part of their proposal for the Constitution pipeline? Don't give me that double talk about you're different parts of the same company. It's all the same program. And I understand that your only motivation is profit. But I want you to understand, and I wanted you to take this back to your masters, that we will not allow you to continue. This is the behavior of the death throes of an industry. The oil and gas industry is finished on this planet. Do you understand that? If you want to make profit, you have to switch over to renewable energy. If you had any brains, you would have done it 20 years ago. You three are charged with protecting the environment and the public. And I don't want to hear this double talk about federal standards and state standards. Where are your ethics as a human being? Would you look me in the eye, please, when I'm talking to you? Where are your ethics? You can't. They are human. They are human, and that's why you can't look me in the eye. I asked all of the other questions. I want to repeat, what are you doing to protect your own workers from lawsuits when they do file violations? And an added question, how many investigators do you have to investigate violations in your state? In New York, we have two. Do you think that's adequate? Do you have more than two? So in my outline, I thought it would be helpful to tell you what I'd like to see you do. And I'm speaking to the DEP and the representatives here. I would like to see you completely and totally and forever deny permits for this kind of industry, whether it's compressor station or hydro fracking or any other industry that's going to conflict with your mandate to protect us.
You have about one minute.
I want you to become a national showcase for renewable energy. Even though he's not looking at me, I've seen his eyes. And I can see that the three of you are intelligent people and you know how to do this. You have the capability to do this. I want you to fulfill your mandate to protect this beautiful state of Pennsylvania. Her citizens, the livestock, and future generations.
30 seconds.
And everything else I wrote down, people asked. Thank you.
Howard Hannam? Howard?
My name is Howard Hannam and I am a small farmer from Delaware County, New York. The downwind jet stream from northeast, in the northeast part of the United States is basically an inverted L shape from Pittsburgh, PA to the Hudson Valley in New York. The affected area within that downwind jet stream is roughly 210 to 220 miles. If ground zero of northern Pennsylvania gas drilling is Towanda, I am certainly in the downwind affected area just 71 miles away. As a good neighbor policy, I have some concerns with this station going in. Title V federal permitting is conveniently avoided because the segmenting, segmenting the different pieces and permitting with GP V, one piece at a time. Cabot Williams Midstream and Williams HP Compression Station, located on the same 54-acre site on Turnpike Road in Brooklyn Township, should require an aggregate cumulative environmental impact assessment. Your regional office is located in Wilkes-Barre, PA, which is just outside the downwind jet stream of Bradford and Sesquahanna Counties. Or your measurement instrumentation is located in Wilkes-Barre as well. It's one thing to claim the air quality is sufficient, but when it's measured from a source located outside the jet stream, that is quite something else. Finally, on the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, areas of high potency across northern Pennsylvania are set to be studied in the fall. Meanwhile, you are continuing to issue permits throughout the future study site. I would advise waiting on approval of permits until the results are available, which would shed more light on that decision-making process. And then finally, please enter the EPA Star Program for this site.
Thank you, sir. We have William Houston? I wrote it down, I don't understand. Okay.
You can use anyone.
I'm going to use that. And we figure I like to be on TV. Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. If I were to ask, I'm thinking like a James Bond movie. If I were to ask, like I had a mad scientist. If I'm like a really evil man and I'm a mad, I have a friend that's a mad scientist. And I tell my friend, the mad scientist, that I want to destroy an entire nation of 10 million people. It's about the size of New York. And I said, mad scientist friend, how would you go about doing that? Because, I don't know, I'm just an evil man. You're the brand. So the mad scientist guy pulls out his pen. He starts writing down some calculations. He's kind of like scratching his head and doing some stuff. He says, I think I got it. What we're going to do is we're going to take 70,000 injection wells. And we're going to shoot, we're going to do two things. We're going to take massive amounts of water and we're going to mix it with poison and shoot it into the water table or through the water table, through leaky conduits. That's potentially the worst-case scenario of what we're talking about here. We already have homes in Pennsylvania very close to here that are being abandoned. Do you know that? Oh, I'm sorry. This isn't a question and answer. You're not going to respond. So I'm sorry about asking you that question. 350 billion gallons. I know where they're in PA, it's a little different. But what's coming to New York is projected. I know the numbers for New York. 70,000 wells times 5 million gallons per well. Comes out to be 350 billion gallons consumptive use. That's what, and we're talking about one little compressor station. We have to be looking at the big picture. If we don't look at the big picture, cumulative impacts, have you heard that before tonight? Has everybody? I think a few people have talked about cumulative impacts here tonight. If you don't look at the big picture, it's called segmentation. And it's illegal, especially when the possible consequence of segmentation is the destruction of life. For how long? How long will this play? How long will Dimic be poisoned? 500 years? Or will it be more like 10,000 years? Has that study been done? I assert, I've looked into this. I've studied the technical documents. And it is my belief that this station that you're talking about is the beginning. The only reason why you need that level of compression is because you want to pump it into a big pipeline, like a 30-inch. I mean, we're not stupid. We've got physicists here. We can understand this stuff. The only reason, it's not like, well, we're thinking, you know, we might use the Constitution as an input if it comes online. You're expecting it to come online because there's no reason for this station without it. And if it's true that this is the beginning of the Constitution pipeline, then you've begun. It's in progress. I've seen it. I've been to the site. You're building it. You're not waiting for the federal permit. You're building it now. Constitution's in pre-file. How dare you do this? The question is, the question is, do we have a democracy here? Do the people rule? Or does some business entity get to decide what's going on here?
You have about a minute here.
So let's talk about levels of crime. First, we have like a parking ticket. A parking ticket is what you call like an infraction. It's a minor crime. Nobody really gets injured. Then we have something like, you know, battery. Where like somebody shoves, in public, like this guy is operative at EID. His buddy Vic Furman, who's an EID operative, shoved me. That's called battery. That's like a little minor, that's a little bit more serious. Then we have a level of crime like murder or rape, where somebody really gets harmed in a major way. And then as we increase the level of sort of like severity of crimes, we have genocide, where there's like many lives lost. Or like an entire region killed. You are, if we have a system of law, you are guilty of the highest crimes our law has. We need you to stop this. Do not permit this. Defect, you know, become a whistleblower or stay in work within the system. Do whatever. We don't care how you do it, but do not permit this thing and stop this construction right now. Thank you.
Thank you. A little insider? Go ahead.
I don't think this forum is exactly appropriate in some ways. I think it doesn't give enough time for basically a conversation with people to find out what's going on. And I hate to do this, but I'm not quite sure which ones, the DEP and the EPA position person here. If they could raise their hand and just let me know, I'd really appreciate it.
There's no EPA here.
There is no EPA, okay. Is there a DEP?
Sorry, we were introduced to the earlier.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. I don't have enough time to cover all the issues. Let's just cover exactly what we observed here. When they're asked, are the emissions similar to regular tailpipe emissions? The first answer was yes. That's a slight spin on it. Long chain carbon, carbon, long carbon chains are typically carbon monoxide and water. When you have methane, your primary partial combustion component is formaldehyde. You got, the question was asked the second time. The second person answered, well, before a tailpipe of diesel, you have more particulate. That's true, but again, formaldehyde wasn't mentioned. Finally, a third time the question was asked and formaldehyde was directly asked. And somebody did volunteer that. Now, I'm sorry, I just got to step over here for a second. I'm not showing anything, I'm just quoting from it. But here's some Texas. And I believe these are compressor stations. And usually, the emissions are between 6, 9, 15 tons, 32 tons. The Williams station up in West Windsor, the EP, I believe it's EPA, I'm not quite sure. But basically, it says that you're allotted so much pollution. And as long as you stay under that, you're okay. Now, people here came to this area, as you heard before, for the clean air. They came here for the clean water. When you're just keeping it under the limit, that's like bringing New Jersey to them. That's not what they came here for. And you're not creating, you're not being innovative. This isn't a system of industry where you're actually creating wealth. When that happens and you're just keep, EPA allows you to just stay under the limit, all you're really doing is transferring wealth. You're transferring wealth from the people who own land, where people will no longer want to live there, to the industry. And I see no, you know, no recompensation for this. What else? I went to the West, then there's a magical mystery tour of mysteries of what actually is happening. A saline tank, is that a euphemism for the heavy? My understanding is that when you do drilling, you use heavy salts because the heavy salts in the water basically makes the water denser and lifts the materials up. It helps the drilling process. Now, I could be wrong on this. But is a saline tank an euphemism for heavy metal salts like sodium arsenide? I don't know. And how do I find out? When you're, where is? Okay, so the saline is right, the saline tank is right there at the pipe or at the wellhead. And then you have at the compressor station, you said a minor accident again. There was a 100-foot flame in West Windsor going up. I think it lasted for about four or five hours. And they said it was a natural standard action of venting methane. If you're venting methane, that basically would equivalent, if you ignite it, a 100-foot flame, that makes me question exactly why you're venting it.
You have 12 minutes, sir.
Okay, well, so I don't know why the choice was made between venting and burning. I don't think anybody in this audience knows. We don't, when I went to the West Windsor site, I looked at the legal postings on the board. They're all standard. None of them are filled out. It was amazing. The only thing that they didn't forget to do is put a big sign up and it filled up about a quarter of the thing. That showed no video cameras. Now.
30 seconds.
Okay. I don't blame the industry for trying to make as much profit as possible. That's their job. I do find blame in the fact that we have environmental protection that is not working right now. And typically, the people are in the dark. When they end up doing the FOIL request to find out that there is contamination on their land and that the fine was already assessed for maybe $10,000.
So your time is up, so you have?
And no action can be taken because the fine already was assessed.
Eugene Mannmer, Mannmer? I'm sure I pronounced that wrong.
Warner.
Warner, sorry. Did he leave?
Yes, he did.
Okay, okay. Mr. Marsh? Grab the first name, Marsh. Larry Marsh?
Lott.
Lott, Marsh. Did he leave? Did he?
I didn't sign up.
Lott, okay. I'm just going from the left. Do you want to open an offer? Lott, I apologize. Can't understand my handwriting. Go ahead.
I don't have anything prepared, but I, I moved here twenty-five years ago. I saved for a really long time to be able to have a farm and have animals and organic blueberries and live where every day you see something beautiful. The Constitution pipeline is slated to come through my yard. And I find it unconscionable that it's not for need, it's for greed. You come to one of these meetings and you expect answers. You did a great job. Every time it got critical, where they had to answer the tough questions, you shut it down. You barely looked, you didn't speak at all. You, the whole time people are speaking, you have your head down, doodling. You guys have no idea what people who live here are going through, what they, they stand to lose. We don't have anything to gain at all. You people have maybe something to gain. The gas company definitely has something to gain. You could give a rat's ass for citizens. You're not here as EPA for protection. Where is that? What are you doing to protect citizens? What will you do?
Issue the permit.
May I, sir?
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak, Rebecca? And then I'll, I'll get you. Just when you come up, these are the names that aren't on the list. Come up, just say and spell your name again for the stenographer.
I ran out of ink, so I have this. My name is Rebecca Roter, R-E-B-E-C-C-A, R-O-T-E-R. I live 575 Turnpike Road, Brooklyn, PA. It's a Kingsley, PA mailing address, 18826. And I'm gonna read my prepared statement, which is about three minutes, and then just go off the cuff. My prepared statement is very polite. I thank DEP for the opportunity to comment about the Williams Central Compressor, AKA the Williams Midstream Central Station, per Williams prefiled application FERC. I ask DEP to inform FERC that this compressor station will be part of the startup of the proposed thirty-inch transmission FERC project, the Constitution pipeline. FERC rep Charlie Brown told me Williams had stated this station is not and will never be part of the Constitution pipeline. DEP permitted this fifty-four acre site originally with a GP5 for two engines. You don't need fifty-four acres for two engines. It was permitted as a minor source air source. That's why it was a GP5. Yet Williams clearly intends this to be the first compressor station on a one-hundred-trial, twenty-mile, FERC-regulated, thirty-inch transmission line. This is segmentation. And on your prefiled application, this is clearly the Williams Central Midstream Station. I ask DEP to do their own analysis of the greenhouse gas emissions Williams has projected for this Williams Central Compressor, a five-engine compressor, for now. I ask DEP to require an air pollution dispersal study using EPA's model to conduct such a study to be concerned about public health. I live on the hill, a mile down the hill, so this is very personal to me. Mr. Kemper knows that. I thank DEP for planning to do a year-long air quality study in Susquehanna County and ask that you add an ozone monitor to the study. I thank DEP for issuing ozone air quality alerts for Wilkes-Barre Scranton as of August 1st, 2012. I would request an ozone monitor be added in Susquehanna County as we are slated for twenty-six more natural gas compressors. This will significantly add to our ozone level and definitely affect our health. Ozone, you know, affects public health. I ask DEP to perform an aggregate air study for our Northeast region, as you have done for the North Central, as they understand it. Our, our area is one of the most active shale areas with air impacts from increasing numbers of compressors, flare, and wellheads. Do an aggregate air study before you issue any more permits. I think the air study DEP plans, the air study that you plan for Susquehanna County is a good start and would ask for a permanent regional air quality monitoring station as we have many new sources of air pollution itemized in tons per year in every air quality permit you issue for every single compressor for VOCs, NOCs, sulfoxides, and HAPs, hazardous air pollutants. And those are your terms. I would like to see DEP keep a rolling total for all the aggregate air pollution you permit for our breathing air for the natural gas industry by region. Add up all the tons per year in every major category for every region so you can tell us how many tons per year aggregate you're permitting for our lungs. Sorry. I would like to point out, we learned from the Williams-Lather compressor explosion last March, no agency has public oversight for public safety in pipeline gathering line accidents. In Class 1 rural areas, FERC-regulated, like the Constitution pipeline, there are no provisions made for public safety or routine inspection. In both cases, the operator, Williams, has sole oversight over pipeline safety. Additionally, pipeline fatalities in Class 1 areas and high-consequence areas, rural areas like we all live in for the most part, most of Susquehanna County is Class 1, the operator does not need to report pipeline-related fatalities. You're looking at most of us. So if I die in a pipeline, Williams pipeline accident, it doesn't have to be reported. That marginalization of human life. Is no one accountable to us for our own safety? And will DEP continue to issue permits for compressors knowing there is no oversight for our health or our safety? I can't say anything, sorry.
Anyone else that hasn't? Matt, you wanna go?
I'll walk the way around the room. Is anybody in a hurry? Can I use my name for somebody else?
Go ahead.
Here's Matt.
Yeah, go ahead. Matt's offering you his, go ahead. You got that? Okay, thank you.
As a resident of a rural Class 1 area, I am alarmed at the many tons of toxic emissions projected in this permit application. Class 1 areas have the most industrialization, environmental destruction, and hazardous pollution. Of all places, Class 1 areas should have the strongest regulations. This is where the pollution starts, where it is the heaviest, where it accumulates the most. From here, the air currents carry the toxins to the more concentrated populations. So DEP, if you intend to protect, pro to protect them, regulate here. The open range land in our Western states with healthy, clean air draw hunters and tourists like us, bringing income, clean income, to their areas. Since gas development, they've been ruined. I fear we are on the same path here in Pennsylvania. I'm particularly alarmed at the number of compressor stations being permitted for Susquehanna County alone and that there has been no indication so far that the emissions aggregated together will show the need to substantially reduce the emissions from each station. I do see the DEP has responded in some ways to citizen concerns, but the necessary changes are painfully slow. Please, don't make us earn your move toward the adoption of best technology by waiting and watching us lose our health and risk our children's future.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Walker, and I represent the Clean Air Council. We're a Pennsylvania environmental health group. The council urges DEP to stop approving any compressor stations, including the central station, until it has completed the one-year air quality and public health impact study it has proposed for Washington County. The council applauds the decision to conduct the study, but believes that DEP should not continue to approve so many air pollution permits at such a rapid pace without having the science necessary to make a well-informed decision. Now is the time to step back and look at what is going on with shale gas development in PA and determine whether DEP can ethically and legally continue approving permits so quickly when DEP is aware of the, of the public health and environmental ramifications from other states that have already had experience with intense shale gas development. And just to be clear, DEP's short-term air monitoring report performed last year was not comprehensive enough to determine cumulative air emissions issues. The report states, quote, and I quote, "Due to the limited scope and duration of the sampling and the limited sources and facility sample, the findings only represent conditions at the time of the sampling, do not represent a comprehensive study of emissions." The sampling did, quote, "not address the cumulative impact of air emissions from natural gas operations," end quote. This compressor station's three engines, one turbine, and three dehydration units, emergency generator, flare, and storage tanks had the potential to emit tons of harmful pollutants each year into the air everyone breathes. The station will emit forty-two point seven four tons per year of VOCs, many of which are known to cause cancer, and seventy-one point six three tons per year of nitrous oxides. This is the perfect recipe for smog, which, as you know, has been linked with the rest, with a variety of respiratory diseases and is associated with cancer, stroke, and premature death. It clearly states in the, in the air permit that the station will supply gas to the Constitution pipeline. The council urges DEP to send a comment to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, explaining that this station should be included in FERC's environmental impact assessment of the Constitution pipeline. But perhaps the most troubling number is that DEP would allow the station to emit ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and one tons per year of CO2 equivalent, just under the one-hundred-thousand tons per year threshold that would require a federal air permit with stricter pollution control technologies offsets monitoring and record-keeping. The twelve-month limitations were designed as a maximum threshold, not as a target for companies to approach as closely as possible, but without going over. DEP failed to check the greenhouse gas emissions calculations performed by Williams to ensure all the potential sources of methane were being appropriately accounted for. The council requests that you complete this important work. As you may be aware, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, IPCC, states that methane is seventy-two times more potent to greenhouse gas and carbon dioxide over twenty years. The gas industry is the largest humidity source of methane emissions globally. Renowned NASA scientist James Hansen recently published a peer-reviewed article showing that climate change is here now and is not some distant threat. Scientists estimate that a warmer climate will greatly increase the frequency of days with unhealthy levels of ground-level ozone. Since I can't assume that DEP will take my advice on pressing the pause button on their decision-making for the station, I'd like to lay out a few suggestions for how DEP can at least improve their oversight and how Williams could at least improve their public relations in relationship to this compressor station. First, the council requests DEP to postpone their approval of the station until it's performed thorough and proper aggregation analysis. You recognize this from before? It's the same thing. You still haven't done it yet. I need you to do an analysis of all the equipment that may be interconnected with other natural gas equipment or risk the possibility of having these permits go to the Environmental Hearing Board to be reevaluated, as we're now doing in the North Central Region, you might be aware. In their, in their application, Williams lists out seventeen other compressor stations and related facilities that are subsidiaries of Williams Field Services. The public deserves to know how this equipment is or is not connected to, or interdependent upon each other and whether or not this facility, in conjunction with others, should be regulated as a major source of air pollution rather than the proposed minor source. House the department ensuring that emissions from the increasing number of shale gas sources are not cumulatively degrading air quality and that levels will.
You have a minute, Matt.
Thank you.
Rebecca, give him a minute.
No, thanks. I, okay, we got a little more than that by my watch. Thank you. Degrading air quality and that levels will not exceed the national ambient air quality standards, especially in counties such as this one with no air monitors. We acknowledge that DEP will now begin monitoring for VOCs in Susquehanna County, which is a good start, but we do, we do request that you begin monitoring for ground-level ozone as well. DEP states in their review memo for the station that it reviewed the Williams analysis of what constitutes best available technology and agreed that the technologies recommended by Williams are the most economical control for engines. And that's a quote, "economical control." First, economics should not be the only criteria for selecting which technologies would be required for the station, and that's all it's put in the permit. Second, DEP did not write out any type of BAT analysis besides stating that it agreed with Williams. This is completely inadequate. It appears as though DEP is allowing Williams to decide what technology should be required at their own site and based purely on economic reasons. The council requests DEP to perform their own BAT review and release it to the public for further comment before any decisions are made on the station. The council recommends emissions testing about once every three months rather than the proposed one time per year. The North Central Region of DEP is consistently requiring this for similar facilities. Finally, we encourage DEP to require technologies and practices from EPA's Natural Gas Star, and again, ask Williams to look in, again, into doing the same thing. I urge you to do that. And perhaps more importantly, we, the council and area residents challenge Williams to lower their emissions of VOCs and methane by voluntarily being a part of EPA's Natural Gas Star program. Please do your due diligence and research and suggestions you hear tonight before, tonight fully, before responding and before approving any planned approvals. Thank you.
Thank you. That's okay, all right, okay. I do promise you, but it's okay with you, because I didn't. If you would just indulge me. Hang on a second. You can, Matt, you can speak, okay. Want to do this orderly? Go ahead, Matt. Just three sentences, I want. Okay. Rebecca, you already had your time to speak and you gave your minute to Matt. Please indulge me because we're breathing it. I want you to realize that when you permit that, the forty-six tons of VOCs and the however thousands of, you know, tens of thousands of tons of nitrous oxides, we're gonna be breathing it right on that hill. My neighbor lives three hundred. Okay, Rebecca, you're already looking at. You're looking at the people. You're going over your time. I don't care. I'm speaking. I don't care. I want you to understand that. It's not just a piece of paper. It's people and, and health and lives. It is.
Be human.
Thank you, thank you. Sir, can I go? Matt, Frank, you can go.
Happy to be here, Rebecca Lockhart, from Franklin, New York. I've been in your office. And this is generational genocide. And this is criminal, what you guys are doing. This is a, this is a criminal business. It should be shut down. It should be criminal.
That's right.
And thanks to Senator Tony ML. He'll fight you if we're gonna get the Republican Party out. We're gonna get the House in, and we're gonna put you out. I'm not coming to New York to get about it. Change your plans tonight. Don't even wait. Because January, the ballgame's gonna change.
That's right.
We don't play games in New York. You can see, we're here already. We're not even waiting for you guys to come. We've already been to your offices in Pennsylvania. We followed you all the way around, wherever you went. We were here for the open house. We followed you upstate, on Yaskel, weather. You could, and, and you also like to force advertise. Come on. And you get some people that don't have the smartness or put two and two together and don't want to do research. I went to school for twelve years in this country. I grew up in Ridgewood, Queens, Brooklyn. I worked in Manhattan. I saw a second plane going to the buildings. Okay? Oh, yeah, we're safe down by Trade Center. I called my BAs, I told them, "It's not safe." They come out, "Oh, yeah, the air quality's safe." Now what happened? You got all those people who's sick, they're dying. You just don't care. Nobody cares. That's why it's generational genocide. So I'm retired. I'll follow you wherever you go. I don't care. I'll protest wherever I gotta go. I know how to organize. So I'll be there every time you turn around. And I get all the organizations, from all the other organizations. They all know me. We'll go three hundred. Bruce Ferguson should have been here. He's a leader. He should have been here. Since he has a compressor station. And I already called Alyssa Furr, and I told her, "Put me down for wherever the pipeline goes because you're a bunch of crooks." And some judges know that already, that I talk to. And some judges know that already, that I talk to. So if you think I'm playing, look at your videos you're watching. I'm all over the place, you don't scare me. I grew up in Ridgewood, Queens, so I'm straightforward and I'll put you down. Because if you're going to kill generations to come, your own families you don't care about, you don't even care about your own family, so what kind of human beings are you? You're a disgrace to the human race. Thank you, sir.
Just say it, spell your name, please. Frank Finan, F-I-N-A-N. I never intend talking, I always get wound up when I come here. I just don't understand why we have to use this detail to explain how bad this is when it's so obvious.
Really?
You're obnoxious, you smell bad. You look at the pain in your eyes from hearing this talk. We're talking a normal conversation, I can see you're being tortured, I can see you look at the ceiling every time, you're just like, "Ah." So I'm going to talk for five minutes just to annoy you. Here we have a little wind, sleeves as white as snow. Oh crap, I gotta take a, I'll be right back. Can you hold the clock?
No, this is your time, everybody, speak.
I'll be gone for a minute, it's got a-
And who's the next person that wants to speak? Okay, sir? Sorry, you're not going to come here with the sign, okay? The sign, please, put the picture, put it right there.
And I could dedicate the rest of my time to something more intelligent.
I'm going to sign this from Alba, and you can read up on that text.
Okay. I just have thirty seconds. No, Rebecca, you've had your time.
No, Miss Conley, she had, she had to sign up, she could have had five minutes, she can sign up. Would you like her to sign off?
Not you, she can sign up and come up.
Because there's no reason for you to be so rude, and I am going to complain, you're very rude.
She can come up and speak, I'm trying to get up to speak. If you want to speak-
Because she gets to-
You want to speak?
You haven't given her two seconds.
She had her five minutes.
No, you've got everybody off, and you're being very rude.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir, would you like to sign up?
My name is Mark Schmerling, that's Mark with a K, S-C-H-M-E-R-L-I-N-G. I'm from Honeydon Valley, Pennsylvania, which is southeast Montgomery County. I'm not sure why we're all here, really. Wouldn't we all rather be doing better things on a nice day? You know, I hear all this talk about VOCs and nitrous oxide and formaldehyde and all this crap. Has anyone here, audience question, panel question, have you ever heard of a still from a solar panel, a solar panel or a wind turbine?
No.
Sunshine.
Do you know that, you must know, that solar power and wind power and probably other forms of renewable energy are cheaper, yes, less expensive to the consumer if, if the externalized costs are not externalized, if businesses pay all their true costs of operating, then wind and solar are cheaper than any kind of carbon-based energy, cheaper than nuclear. So I don't know why we're here, except since we are here, and I won't show this, this is a photograph, and if you'd like to see it, this is a photograph, if you'd like to see it, you can see me afterward, I'll have it outside in the hallway. I just want to show this to the panel here so they can think about something.
Put a photo, sir, you can put it in the hall, thank you. You can, let them follow the photos. Man, you need to be quiet. I'm going to end this meeting right now. Put the picture down now, sir. Continue your testimony, you have five minutes. Okay, you can put the photo down. And please stop interrupting, go ahead.
The face, the face you don't want to look at belongs to Pam Judy. Pam Judy is in this photograph of a compressor station out in Green County. Pam Judy was standing in front of that compressor station very bravely for me to photograph her, even though living eight hundred feet away from that compressor station made her very, very sick. So sick with severe nausea, headaches, dizziness, that she was on NPR's, all things considered, around June or July of 2011, explaining why she was very sick from this compressor station. I could show you photos of Phyllis Carr and her family from Fayette County, Pennsylvania. They lived downhill from a compressor station. Phyllis's two young grandsons had lesions in their throats and were very, very ill from breathing air from this compressor station. So I don't know why we're even talking about this stuff when a lot better alternatives Another photograph that people are welcome to see outside after I leave is of Sandy McDaniel from Bedford County, from Clearville, Clearville in Bedford County. Sandy lives very near a compressor station, which is, guess what, uphill from her farm. It made her very sick. When I was thinking about coming down there to meet her, she had postponed it a couple of times because she could hardly even get up out of bed from all this stuff that was coming off this compressor station. So I don't know why we're even talking about this when so many cleaner alternatives are So, I am saying, please, I urge you, deny this permit for this compressor station because it's part of a gargantuan, sick, evil dream conceived by people who don't care what kind of world our own kids and grandkids live in. You can do better, you can do better than this. DEP folks, you can do better than this. I know your boss is a crook. Michael Kratzler, I heard him lie his way through a speech in a synagogue sanctuary. Didn't mean anything to him, but you're better than he is. You can do better than he does.
Don't bet on it.
I, I'm hoping they are, I'm appealing to your humanity to do better than he does. But you don't have to put up fancy machinery to, to gauge air pollution. A lot, a lot of other receptacles of air pollution are around, but DEP doesn't want to, doesn't seem to want to deal with them. Those are human beings who have breathed in a lot of poisons anywhere these compressor stations and other facilities are located. They're, they're your, they're your apparatus. Please pay attention to them and see what has thumbed in them. Don't worry about machines that you might put in the wrong places. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just in the back, someone's in the back. Matt, come on, I've been waiting for you all night. Thank you.
The EPA chief from Malhein is right by the mic, somebody should-
Okay, Matt, go ahead.
My name is Iris Marie Bloom, and I am the founder and director of Protecting Our Waters. I came here from Philadelphia, we work statewide and regionally. I would like to ask you, urge you, and insist that you deny the permit for the Williams compressor, the Williams Central Compressor Station. You must do, DEP and the Health Department of Pennsylvania must do a health impact assessment. That is not a short-term, six-week study, that is a long-term projection of all the health impacts from the full lifecycle impacts of the shale gas drilling industry. Because these, all these different components, including compressor stations, are spewing carcinogens into our air, our water, our lungs, our bodies. And we're talking about endocrine disruptors, neurotoxins, carcinogens, and biocides. We must do a cumulative impact study. Cumulative, that word has been said over and over, but we haven't heard any reflection from any of you in this, on this panel, not Williams, not the DEP, that you understand what we mean by cumulative. So let me spell it out. You have to look at the aggregate, the aggregate impacts of all of the compressor stations. You cannot pretend that they are single sources. If every single person in this room was smoking a cigarette, that is a little different from one person smoking a cigarette. So it's a deception and a lie to pretend that all these compressor stations together, if you just measure them as if there's only one at a time, everything's just fine. That is no longer okay with any of us. I have asthma, and I don't want anyone to get asthma. And asthma develops long-term, just like cancer. It doesn't happen overnight, so the children and babies are most at risk. So we want to make sure that those that are most vulnerable are taken into account. Finally, sorry, third point, formaldehyde, the appropriate level of formaldehyde in our atmosphere is zero. Just to be really clear about that, that's also true for all the other emissions, zero. Fourth point, constitutional pipeline, this, this compressor station is part of the constitutional pipeline, and we want DEP to submit a comment to FERC, to F-E-R-C-FERC, that their EIA, their environmental impact assessment, has to include the Williams compressor station as part of the constitutional pipeline, which we call the unconstitutional pipeline because it's unconstitutional in terms of its impacts on Pennsylvania, New York, and our people. Fourth point, greenhouse, and this is all to support the argument that you must deny this permit. Greenhouse gas emissions, this is a major source of greenhouse gas emissions, it's obvious. And if you simply look at reality, which means considering the methane impacts, because methane is spewing out into the air, into the atmosphere, and this, we're in a state of emergency, so we have to be in reality. Methane is a hundred and five times more potent a greenhouse gas than CO2 on the twenty-year timeframe. So you have to use accurate numbers, not twenty-one. Then if I, just my remaining time, the BAT, the best available technology, that is wind, solar, geothermal, and wave energy. And some of you guys are young, whatever your age is, you're smart guys, you need to switch over into the energy of our future, into the sustainable technology that is for our future. It's hard to do in a capitalist economy because the whole system is geared on short-term profit. So we need to switch now away from short-term profit that is, you know, enabling, forcing us to, forcing you, not forcing me, but forcing you because of your kind of profit, you're stuck in the profit system, so you're, you know, creating, you're a part of a system that is only short-term and that is, is kind of worshiping greed. And so I'm not ma, I'm not saying that is a personal statement, then I'm not saying you're worshiping greed, but our system kind of forces you to do that. I want to lastly thank everyone here for your courage and your compassion. It takes a lot of courage and a lot of guts and a lot of energy and a lot of labor to do the research and to speak up, and I want all of you up front here to develop your courage and compassion and move in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that could not offer, sir, do you want to go? And then, sir, we'll, we'll try and move over to you back over there, okay? Just say it, spell your name, please.
My name is Bill Freund, F-R-E-U-N-D, 180 High Street in Montrose. I don't have anything prepared or scripted, and I may stumble. I'm, I'm coming here after living in China for four and a half years. And let me describe the vision that we have there in an attempt to encourage us to prevent having the same thing here. Where I lived, you could, you could not drink the water, that's a given, and there was water scarcity that affected people's daily livelihood. Point one. Point two, the air was breathable, but most people, the most foreigners, bought a personal air purification system that you could put inside your little apartment, and you would spend as much time indoors as possible. If, if one, when I would go for bike rides to enjoy the countryside, I, I stumbled into plants that, that made me wish I was back in the U.S. And honestly, guys, now I feel like I've stumbled into one of those plants again. And let me, let me moderate that a bit because I've, I've worked for multinationals, worked for multinational corporations for a few decades. I understand the benefits that come from big business. I understand the need to act with our personal integrity as the number one item where we make our judgments. There's a lot of pressure from the top down. You guys are standing here in front of us, sitting here, getting railed at one after another. That's not my intent. I appreciate the work you're doing, but I would like to request, and the reason I gave my address, I would like to understand the process by which we as citizens could initiate the move from a single-site-at-a-time evaluation of the effects to cumulative effects. Thank you.
My name's Dale Webster. I actually am not experienced with the compressor stations, I'm not sure of the effects that they have, but on some of the other matters, I've got two gas wells for drilling on property. I have pipelines. And as far as I can see, the DEP has done a good job monitoring those, and I see that a lot of the concerns that people have here are valid, but nevertheless, everything that's promoted isn't necessarily always bad, and we only see pictures of the torn-up ground and unseated areas when they're in their worst state. I challenge anybody to come back and look at the properties after the full development and been inspected by the DEP and adequately protecting them. I have a spring, I drink water out of it, it's not polluted. The fracking has had no effect on my wells or the neighboring community, but maybe places where this happens, but not specifically. And that's pretty much what I have to say about everybody else's concerns. As far as the pipelines and the well drilling, it seems to be good, solid science. The compressor stations, I don't know about this one. That's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Anne Thompson, I live in Montrose, and I wanted to stand up to express my strong support for everything that Mark and Rebecca and Iris said much more eloquently than I could have done, and I'm sorry I don't have your last names. And I also wanted to take this opportunity to express my great disappointment in the Department of Environmental Protection in Pennsylvania, which I feel has failed us as citizens in many respects, and many of those aspects have been outlined in other people's remarks this evening. But it should have been so obvious that environmental impact studies should have been undertaken. It should have been so obvious that the cumulative effects, the aggregate, aggregative effects of the pollution caused by the gas should have been studied. These should be done before people are at risk. The risks should have been calculated. And it's, I, I wonder how it is that the Pennsylvania government is not ashamed to look next door at Mont, at New York and see the lengths of time that they have taken to actually study what citizens wanted, to, to take statements from so many people submitted, to, to look at the impacts. Whereas we, in, in Pennsylvania, our government seems to lack the political will to protect citizens and is willing to support big business that may damage and has been seen to damage our state and which holds our citizens at risk. Thank you.
So just say it, spell your name.
Jeff Dahlander, D-A-H-L-A-N-D-E-R. Two and a half years ago, I moved back to Pennsylvania from Boston, and one of the first things that I was concerned about coming from Boston is, and we never talked about oil and natural gas, even people up in Boston, still, they don't know what fracking is. So it's kind of centralized, I think, to this region, maybe south. So I made an appointment to see my state representative after I had seen in the newspaper an article that quoted a Cornell professor calling Pennsylvania "a guinea pig for New York." So I went to Sandy Major's office, and she folded up that newspaper and told me not to believe everything that I read. And she assured me at that point that when the industry leaves, everything will be just as good, if not better, than it was before. Now, she also said during that conversation that if somebody would just run against her and win, she was okay leaving that position, and that's why I'm running against her. So I have some sympathy. I have some, some, I have, well, I have a tremendous amount of sympathy for the people in this room that are here as an audience and have, who have come to very bravely express their opinions, and I also have some sympathy for government employees that have taken their time out to actually deburrate it, knowing that our representative and our governor, the people that are not in this room have reduced your ability to do what your mission is to do, which is to protect us. Instead, they sit on the opposite side with the oil and gas industry, and while they reduce your ability to keep us safe, they line their pockets with the cost-cutting measures that come from the other side. That is my official testimony, and that is truly what I believe, and I believe that's what a lot of people in this room believe. I would just like once to see Senator Gene Yaw, Tina Pickett, Sandy Major, any of our representatives at one of these hearings and actually talk to us and explain to us, how about our county commissioners? We have three. I've never seen any of them at any of these meetings. Are they briefed on what actually happens at these meetings pre or post-meeting to know what constituents on all these levels feel about this situation? I think there's a lot of fear, fear in this room of the other. I think there's a lot of fear, fear in this room of the other. And I explain this to the DEP, that you're from Harrisburg, so we fear that you're not in our best interest. We fear that you're not, that you're not actually here to represent us, knowing the full picture is that you don't have the budget to do so. We fear you, even though you, I truly believe you're all human beings. I've worked at, at Bank of America and I know what it's like to be in corporate culture and you just have to do your job. Sometimes you may not be able to publicly express your feelings about what you do, but you're just doing your job and you're human beings and you deserve respect as well. But in this situation, I feel like Pennsylvanians are losers in this situation. We are in an unfortunate situation and the people that are responsible for this are not here to say why they have done this to us. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to point one thing. We're from Wilkes-Barre. The Wilkes-Barre, the northeast region, it does not hurt. Just so you don't be alarmed.
Yeah, the other, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to offer a testimony that hasn't spoken yet? Or if not, we're going to conclude this portion of the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, did you?
Just one last word.
Okay.
Five minutes. I don't remember.
Usain, spell your name.
My name is Brian Urhead. I'm from the Montroses. These really aren't prepared statements. I just look notes, always listening. I'll probably have to read a little bit here. But when I look back over the history of our country and the advancements we have made in our standard of living, the lengthening life expectancies, our methods of transportation, all these things have one thing in common. They require energy. It doesn't matter whatever, what it is, nuclear, coal, solar, wind, gas, whatever, they all have their downsides. But we always try to work the problems out and find a way to develop it. And I realize, I do realize that, we all realize that we need energy, it's a central thing to our life. And I'm just, I'm a Navy veteran. I'm glad I live in a democracy where we can have open forums like this, where people can come and air their views. And I'm sure that will work this out also. And I support the gas industry. I know and work out the problems. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, that's going to conclude this portion, the public hearing section of tonight's event. Just so you all know, if you want to write this down, the public comment hearing will end fifteen days after that. The seventh, September seventh, which is a Friday. Friday.
It is Friday.
Ten days, I'm sorry, it's ten days from now, September seventh, that is a Friday. That means you can submit comments to the DEP up until that date, till about four, four thirty in the afternoon. If you want to write this down, it is two Public Square in Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. It's on our website, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. Our zip is one eight seven oh three. You can address it to the air quality staff. Yes? One question. Yes, yes.
Oh, with your email address on the slide also, so I can, so I can send you one or two of these photos, an email?
Yes, there is. It's a general, yeah. Right, right, yes.
Do you have, you mentioned earlier about getting on a snap sheet for the comment response?
Yes, yes. Yes, you can write, write your name and address up here as we're leaving. Yes.
Did you say that you can comment online as part of the ten-day period?
You can submit to mail.
Or just mail?
Mail. You can submit to mail or online, whatever you wish. It's on our website. Okay? Thank you very much for attending. We appreciate it. Have a good evening. Thank you. And once the sign up, you can sign for me.
The people already got conversations. We have the results.
Just you write your name.
Do you still use the same email address?